Hello? Hello? Hello?
647.46 acres. Next slide, please. The applicant is requesting to change the character area of the seven parcels from rural community and suburban neighborhood emerging to Airport Road Industrial Community Character Area. Showing on your screen is the current character map, and if you could go to the next slide. This would be the change should Planning Commission approve it. As this is a comprehensive plan amendment, this request is for Planning Commission review only and will not go on to City Council, so please keep that in mind. Next slide. The applicant is also requesting to rezone all seven parcels from two county zonings, R1A and MDR PUD, R15 PRD and Agricultural Residential, to IR Industrial Restricted. This is the more restrictive industrial zoning used in the city and is consistent with the zoning of the Gallatin Industrial Park. A rezoning to an industrial zoning does not require a site plan. Showing on your screen is the current zoning map, and if you can change to the next slide. This would be the change should City Council approve it. This request will go on to City Council with a Planning Commission recommendation with the annexation and plan of service. This item is represented by the Economic Development Department, so they are here to answer any other questions you might have tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So you've covered items one, two, and three. Do we have a representative for the applicant here to present any information?
Yes, you do. This is James Fenton of the Economic Development Agency for the City of Gallatin.
James, do you have anything to add?
No, that was succinctly stated. Thank you.
Okay. Then, questions from the board? Gillian, could you... There's no... I know there's no site plan necessary for the annex... You said there's no site plan necessary for the annexation.
No.
When we discussed this years ago, there was some discussion of tying a road connection into, I guess that would be Highway 25. That would obviously be a site plan, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does this do anything potentially about a greenway?
We'd have to make sure on the Gallatin plan if the greenway goes through there. We'll take a look at that.
I think the greenway sort of, Bill McCord might know, ran kind of parallel to the railroad track, and so it may not...
It looks like it actually stops before it gets to this property where the railroad track would cross, so it doesn't go through these properties according to the comp plan.
The comp plan takes it up to about where Gateway Drive, and you can see where the railroad ran diagonally. Now, there has been some discussion or talk about extending that greenway up the railroad line northward, but it's not part of the comp plan, and obviously it would require relocation north of Gateway Drive, or if it were to be extended, it would have to be realigned away from the current right-of-way because Beretta was built over that parcel. So to continue it northward, it would need to be both amended in the comp plan to establish it out in that northern portion, but it's not shown on the map that you see there, but it does end at Gateway Drive and extends southwestwardly towards off the map, about the center of the map.
Well, I don't think we should give up on it, but I don't know the proper mechanism to be able to continue it north.
Well, as part of this amendment, you could ask that also a greenway extension be created. You'd have to identify a beginning and/or endpoint. But that's certainly to your purview to do that, I would think, at this time, especially as it involves the property subject to the amendment.
Okay, so I don't know how to do that. I think we should make every indication that we should make these areas compatible with one another. I don't want... Mr. Fenton, I don't want to mess up or complicate anything. Do you... What do you think?
We had discussed it some time ago when, as Bill interjected, that it went right over top, I mean, right through where Beretta has their building. If there's a way for us to skirt, you know, the development, we haven't spoken to this prospect about that possibility. There will be safety concerns, not safety, but...
Security.
Security, yes, that might not allow people to wander through certain parts of the development. I would be glad to take that back and introduce it to them, but I would be hesitant to make that, you know, necessary in order for us to move this project forward.
We're smart, creative people.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're smart, creative people, and we should try to keep that corridor for future growth and, you know, the future greening and all the things that go with it, and I think most industrial partners would agree with that to help us do it without messing up the project and the growth prospects.
Rick, may I... It's Rosemary Bates. May I ask a question? And James, pardon me for interrupting, but on the other properties in the industrial center, there is no requirement for a greenway. I don't know what it would connect to. If it came through the north from Roundtree down to the Beretta property, then it would just end. There is nothing for it to connect to.
Somewhere along the line, Bill McCord could be more descriptive than me. It was discussed that possibly in the future using the railroad right-of-way moving north could be beneficial. We discussed the... Oh, what was the place up near Abingdon, Virginia? The Virginia Creeper Trail, which used a disused railroad bed for 18 miles, and there are thousands of people that use that every year, hiking and biking and stuff. It was... I think we talked about that one of our long-range plans meetings, but...
Well, perhaps you would want to consider that from Roundtree north, but the idea that there is still an existing railroad bed from Roundtree south, it's not existent. There is no more railroad bed to run a greenway along.
There's a grade. There's no gravel or ballast base left. There were ties there, certainly no rails, but the bed, railroad bed, and the cut-in fills are still present.
Yeah, y'all... You know, somebody besides me would have to worry about that. I'm not... I just think we should think this along with all the other things. I'm not trying to complicate it.
No, I'm just letting you know that it's not an option from Roundtree down through the industrial center toward Airport Road. It would not be an option through there.
Okay.
Let me jump in. This is John Ferrer. We had this discussion when Beretta site plan came before us, and Rick, what you're mentioning was the Rails-to-Trails program, you know, using old abandoned railroad right-of-way because the grades so level. And I think it's a great program, but I think we lost the opportunity to extend the greenway north when we made the decision to move forward with Beretta, and the idea of it going through their property now is not possible because it's a fenced-in property all the way around anyway. So I don't think that that option still exists on the greenway, and I'm all in favor of greenways, but I think we passed on that opportunity a few years back. What I am concerned, or what I'm trying to get my bearings around is if you will go to slide number 10, if you'll display that on the screen, please. Yeah, the magenta shade, I see where there's the... There might be two colors here, but they look awfully similar on this screen. There's the IR block there where we're talking about extending the industrial part. What is the remainder of the magenta shade to the east and north of that? I thought that that was already developed homes all along that property line.
No, John, so the IR is that one purple is already existing zoning. If you can go to the previous slide.
Okay.
So that's the existing zoning. That land is not developed, that one square right in the middle. If you go to the next slide, all the new magenta is the rezoning request. This is what it would change to.
Okay, my mistake. I thought there were homes already developed up there in Roundtree along where, north of the IR block.
No, there is not.
Oh, okay. So it would take IR over to the Roundtree Estates Road?
Yes.
Gillian, I'm kind of lost a little bit. Are we talking about Roundtree off of 31E?
Yes.
And there's no report...
So Hartsfield Pike is the south road there, and then it connects into Brights Lane, which will go north?
With the commission's permission, I would share my Google Earth that might help explain this a little bit.
Yeah, I'm kind of trying to figure it out.
May I do that?
Please, yes.
Oops, I cannot while another participant is sharing. All right. All right, thank you. All right. So this block, this is Beretta, and this block, as was indicated, is already zoned industrial restricted. This up to Roundtree is the parcel that's being indicated, and then, of course, this 376-acre parcel. This parcel is already in the city limits. This parcel right here is what's being considered for annexation and rezoning also.
Okay.
All right.
Where is... Use your cursor to point to Airport Road and where it ties into 25.
Airport Road is over here. Ties in there, and here's 31E here.
Got it. I'm a little concerned... I'm just a little concerned that the last time we had this discussion, there was a lot of discussion about how, what the access would be on the 25.
And we'll be bringing that to the Planning Commission. It was originally going to come down here and enter on a curve, and it has been redesigned, so it will no longer do that. So I think you'll be pleased with the new design.
Will there be any access from this industrially-zoned area to whatever street that is that... What's the name of that... Behind Beretta?
No, there'll be no access. There's only... Access will only be on this front portion of their property. There'll be no access here. There may be an emergency access only right here, depending on the final design, but there'll be no access there either.
Oh, so this is... Okay. Those are the important questions I had, because I think that neighbors were very concerned about industrial traffic access coming out under 25, or worse yet, Brights Lane, which really couldn't handle it. But what you're talking about, Brights Lane, would be like an emergency vehicle access so that there would be more than one way in, one way out. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Hey, James?
Yes, sir.
Will you take that hand and just go around the boundaries of it one more time for me, please?
Okay, this is...
Gotcha.
This block is zoned IR and in the city limits already. Go back, but this, it'll start here, come along Roundtree, connect to this, come across around here. This leg will be included. Comes up, encompasses this parcel. And this. Whoops. And back up.
Gotcha. I got it. I understand it now. Yes, sir.
Stop sharing my screen, and we can go back to what Gillian has put together. Here we go.
Thank you, James.
Yep.
I think we've known this is coming. The only thing that surprises me at all, and just kind of have to digest, is that the... Changing the zoning to industrial all the way over to Roundtree, I just wonder, are we going to have... Is that to be used as a buffer zone for the...
Yes, if I might...
Please.
The... The prospect truly wants buffers, a tremendous amount of buffering, and I've actually got some... Let me open this picture up here. They've done some renderings for us, but I'm trying to get it to show big. It's hard to... Hard to make this big enough to see very well, but if I may share my screen again.
Yes.
All right. So, go ahead. Oh, if you would... I'm sorry, Dustin, relinquish. Thank you. So this is a view from Roundtree, and they've superimposed their facility back in there, as you can see here, and that's truly their hope, is that it will be barely visible. We are share going to industrial restricted, but I remind you, this is a light industrial, non-manufacturing Fortune 100 technology. So there won't be noise and that kind of stuff here.
Is this all for one major project?
Yes, sir.
I can't wait.
I've been working on this for three years. I can't either. All right, I'm going to stop sharing again unless there are additional questions.
No.
All right.
Yes, Apple tech control screen. So everything we see there is just for one project? Even the legs that extend down towards 25, that... Is that creating additional sites for other projects, or is this just all related to...
No. No, this will be owned by one company, and there'll be nothing... They've... There are actually neighbors that have expressed interest in buying that. I don't know if that's something that will happen, but no, this is just one project, and the vast majority of it will all be right here with everything else being buffer.
Okay. So question for staff. By the way, James, I'm excited about this, and I know, obviously, we all know what the project is or what help we do.
It's Project Woolhawk.
You bet, yeah. So my question is, when, at what stage do we look at a site plan?
It's their intention to have that presented. We have a pre-op meeting this Thursday to start that process.
Okay. So a question for staff. The zoning would be voted on by council without a site plan, though. Is that correct? Is that the process?
The rezoning to industrial doesn't require site plan, so yes, they would vote on it before you could approve a site plan on it.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody on the commission?
I'd like to give James some mattoffers on his work on this project. Thanks, sir.
Second that, yeah. It's fantastic. If no other discussion, then we will say thank you, James, and we'll move on to item number four, which is Habitat for Humanity, MDP 2020-0090, a final master development plan. What staff member is presenting that or discussing that?
Gallatin Planning. Dustin Shane, Gallatin Planning. Okay, so this is the FMDP for this Habitat for Humanity subdivision. It's going to be on... Let me get my... Let me get this presentation right. Okay, here we go.
By the way, I just apologize to everybody. I think that my butt... I think I was unmuted when I was printing off the agenda, so all that racket was me.
We didn't hear...
Oh, good.
All right, so it's on 2.38 acres, zoned R6 High Density Residential District, located at 599 West Eastland Street. It's for nine single-family home lots, an open space tract, and a public right-of-way. They're asking for an exception to the lot size requirement to have a few lots, about 5,500 square feet. Smaller lots were approved with the rezoning. The overall density has been decreased since that time from 11 lots to nine. No buffer yards were shown on the plan, so we're wanting them to modify where some of their grading is, you'll see in the red circle, to potentially save some of the existing...
Dustin, can you maximize that screen and make it larger? It's very small for us. If not, that's all right. We'll move forward. I just, I don't think anybody can see any detail on that.
There's available at the top of your screen, when Dustin shares it again, that will say view options. You can make it larger up to 150% of what's being displayed on the screen.
We do that on our end. Okay, thank you.
Do y'all like this view better? Is this easier?
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, we'll just do that way if that's easier. Yeah, so the buffer yards, like we said, they weren't showing buffer yards, so we do want them to add those in, but they may have to, you know, move some of their grading to save some of the existing vegetation at those areas that are adjacent to R10. So, thank you.
Do we have a representative for the applicant online to discuss this?
This is Andy with Greenlit, and I'm here.
Okay, Andy, do you have anything to add to Justin's presentation?
So let me give you just a little bit of background when I come into this. Habitat approached this a few years, a year or so ago, to do construction plans, and we picked it up and ran with the construction plans, which are currently approved through engineering for the roads. Got water and sewer already approved, and we thought that they were good to start building. A different firm had done the rezoning, I suppose, and the PMDP, and I thought that the FMDP was squared away when we picked up the construction plan and started running with it. So some of the things that were left out were just, I made assumptions that all those things were taken care of already. So where we stand with this, I think we are not going to need to ask for a variance on the lot size because we went back and looked at that and, you know, moved the lot line a foot or two this way and got to 6,000 square foot without affecting the construction plan that have already been approved. The buffer areas, given the fact that these are, the nature of this subdivision, and the lots are small, and the homes are going to be of a certain size, that swell in the back, we're going to add a buffer in. It may not be... We'd probably be asking the Planning Commission for a variance to that buffer to the south, but we were... We are adding some trees in to the plants. I can't really move that swell because we're going to cut into the lot sizes, and it's just... We already had to lose a couple lots for the stormwater, and Habitat really, it's tight for them right now.
So Andy, will this be one dwelling on that lot that you see back there in the cul-de-sac?
No, this... Dustin's got the grading plan pulled up. Dustin, can you go to the one right before?
Oh, okay.
There's your lots.
Okay. That was confusing me. Is that a bow retention pond in that one area that's not a buildable lot?
So it was gonna be, but it was more important for the overall stormwater for engineering to have a regular detention pond there, so it's not bow retention, it's straight-up detention pond, but we needed to hold water back more than we needed water quality in this particular area of Gallatin. They had some downstream problems that we're trying to help out with.
Okay.
Commissioners, this is one of those subdivision or master plans, final master development plan, that would include the required buffer yard in the rear of all the lots, and with the exception, of course, of the stormwater pond tract. And we've had a couple of issues in Cairo Estates and Twin Eagles where these buffer yards were created as part of the lots, and they become difficult situations for us, meaning that people are not necessarily retaining their buffer yard. So that's something that we've talked about recently, about whether or not to require a separate tract of land to accomplish that buffer yard, or whether you want to continue to allow them to be in the rear of lots and having a difficult process policing that.
I think we just decided last Monday night that, with that decision that we made last Monday night, we decided that all small subdivisions have to have common ground and basically an HOA, which this one's already going to have some common ground in the form of that detention pond. I would rather see a strip of ground along the back, you know, for the buffers, give them the variance on the lot size and let them build, but make it a common ground strip that the buffers are in rather than on individual lots.
Hey, John. It's Matt. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, very well.
Fantastic. Took me a minute to figure it out, but I just chime in on this one. I absolutely agree. I'd rather see a smaller lot size and have the common ground buffer yard so we can be controlled. At the end of the day, it's the same amount of property either way, so it just makes more sense. We don't... I don't think we need to keep doing it the old way.
Any other members of the commission having an opinion on that? This is something we just talked about last week.
I think the common ground over the individual, just because of the issues that came up before.
Oh, Ms. Hibler, you're here. Good.
Yes, I'm here. I didn't want to interrupt earlier. I've been on a couple of projects so far, so sorry about my car readings.
No, no, that's fine. Let the record show Mrs. Hibler's joined us. So your comment was... Would you restate your comment, please?
Same as Matt's, but the common area instead of individual.
Okay. Any other members have an opinion on that?
What does Andy say?
Well, I've always been honest with you guys, and I'll be honest with you still. I don't feel like this is a subdivision to be the guinea pig due to the nature of the project, the lot sizes, and I'd be asking for a lot more variances with the plats. I mean, you'd have to really let me build right up to those setback lines, or you'd almost have to have a zero lot line in the rear because we really can't afford to give up any ground.
I'm personally not opposed to that on this particular project. This is my opinion.
I mean, as long as we can obtain the same product, at the end of the day, I'm okay with it, but the Habitat can't afford... I'm okay with it, but the Habitat can't afford to lose any land here. So I don't know what, I don't know how we need to phrase the preliminary plat, which is also going to be on, it was deferred from last month because we didn't realize the FMDP was not taken care of. So.
Hey, Andy, that's Matt. But I think you're in, we're in line. The, the main point of my comment was just that is keep the same product, a smaller lot size, and have, have the common ground for the buffer yard. So just, I mean, I'm one person on here, but for this particular neighborhood and for what it is, I, I'm not opposed to that. I want to make sure you guys can get the same houses in there.
So Mr., my question would be, how do we address that? Because that, we're going to need to build right on the property line on some of these things then, on some of these lots.
So I'll pose the question to staff. Bill or Josh, or, um, we're trying to be consistent and follow through with what we decided last week, and that is that, you know, keep the landscaping off of private property and keep them on common ground. How can we give him the lot sizes and the variances in a quick turnaround? What problems are we creating by doing that? What would you recommend?
Well, this, this is not part of the code necessarily. The code does not require the buffer yard to be in a separate tract. I think that we were moving that way, and that is kind of the practice that y'all have discussed moving towards because of the situations we've seen ourselves get into. Now, the preliminary master development plan was approved with, and I'd have to go back and, and check and see what kind of buffer yards they proposed at that time. But the preliminary master development plan has been established with, I believe, the buffer yards in the yard. So, um, I mean, you could let it go with this one because that one's, I would say, the preliminary master plan, if it's still vested, I think maybe it is, we'll have to check and see about that. That's an important aspect as well, to make sure that it's still vested, that you would have that option to continue with it since it is, if it is vested. Andy, do you recall when the preliminary master development plan was approved?
You know, as I stated earlier, another engineering firm in local to Sumter County took care of that, and I really don't know. Ms. Johnson come to me with this project, you know, they were already behind the eight ball and asked for construction plans, and I assume that that's all they needed. So that's what we got to work on straight away. So this is, having to do the FMDPs sort of caught me off guard a little bit, but we don't mind to. And I don't even mind to go along with, you know, leaving those, the buffers in open space because as it was already stated, we're going to have to have an HOA to maintain the pond area. That's not a big deal to me, as long as planning and staff can figure out a way to let us build on those property lots.
So, Mr. Purrier, this is Josh. I, I think that with the guidance that we were given by the planning commission last week and understanding the uniqueness of the situation, we will exhaust all efforts to try and comply with the guidance we were given last week to the best of our abilities. And I think Andy and his client are willing to work, work with us to make that happen.
Most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Dustin. They don't, the, the PMDP doesn't show any kind of, you know, that the, the buffers are in any certain place for what that's worth.
Well, the planning commission can grant alternative buffers. So you could, for those narrower lots or those skin, those lots that are not as deep, and I can't see the number on it, but the one at the northeast corner, you could reduce the buffer yard width and the tract associated with it on the back of that lot and keep it as a standard buffer yard on the deeper lots if you wanted to.
So I have two questions. One is, do, do one of these slides, maybe the previous slide or the next one, show a Google Earth image? I kind of like to get a context of the neighborhood we're talking about and what buffers, what we're buffering to know how big a deal this is. Because the last thing I want to do is slow down your process, Andy. We don't want to use it as a guinea pig. You know me, just trying to be consistent with what we said we'd do last week. And my second question for staff is making that change and putting the landscaping in common properties that would be maintained by an HOA. As Andy stated, it would require zero rear yard setbacks in order to maintain the building footprint. Is that going to require him to go back before the Board of Zoning Appeals to get variances? Because that, that does sound like it gets complicated.
This is a master plan, so it wouldn't have to go to the BZA.
I believe, John, this is Josh again. I think this is R6 zoning, which does give us, does give us some options on zero lot setbacks. So that's why I said we would exhaust all efforts with Andy and his client to, to comply the best that we can with the guidance that we've been given by this board.
Yeah, not to mention, now that I see the Google Earth image, look at all that existing tree line back there.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that Roosevelt Circle, isn't that R6 over there?
That is.
So there's not a buffer required on that side. You've got the Housing Authority to the west, and the pond is going to be the bulk of that property line. And then to the south, there's, is a piece of property zoned R10, but, that's, I mean, we've got, we've got room down there actually to, to do what's being requested. So, I mean, there's no argument for me there.
Well, you, you're going to put that swell in there too, in that, probably that same common area tract, if it's, say, 15 or 20 feet wide, whatever. Whatever the minimum required buffer yard, you'd want to put that swell in that area too.
Well, that's, that's true. The, the stormwater aspect of it. And I don't know if anybody from engineering is on here right now, but, you know, we did work with lands pretty extensively because they've got some drainage problems in, in that corridor of the gall, of the city over there. But we're not disagree, if, I mean, if, if the staff wants us to do zero lot lines in the rear, then I'm all for it. I, I just didn't want to give up any building envelope, and it doesn't sound like y'all are asking us to do that. So I think we can put something together and have it turned in for the planning commission.
I think we're all on the same page. Thank you, Andy. Is there any other discussion or does anybody else have any questions on the commission? Well, if not, we'll, we'll see you back in a couple of weeks, and we'll move on to item number six, which is a replat of Valley Overbrook subdivision, a minor subdivision plat. Who's handling this item?
Dustin Shane, Galton Planning. Um, so this one is to, um, this is to extend Nichols Lane to Driver's Lane and replat the lots that are adjacent. With this, this is what's existing here. Nichols Lane doesn't extend on through to Driver's Lane. It's located, uh, south several lots. This is what's being proposed. As you can see, Nichols Lane will now interest, will now traverse through some of those lots, and Driver's Lane will tee into Nichols Lane. Um, but after that intersection, it will still be called Driver's Lane as it is now. Um, so engineering is bringing this project forward to improve traffic flow in this area. Um, they're also adding easements to the affected lots for drainage and utilities. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have a representative for the applicant here?
That would be the engineering department. Hope they're there. Who's there from engineering?
This is Nick. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Yeah, Dustin explained the project. We've, we've actually already purchased the right-of-way and constructed the project. And so this is really just a cleanup plat to actually plat the right-of-way. Unlike, you know, the state of Tennessee, when they acquire land, we kind of get left with, um, with, without a plat. And so we were wanting to go the extra mile here and get a plat on record so that we have our right-of-way shown. And we're actually trying to clean up some of those properties too for the property owners that we acquired right-of-way for, so.
Hey, Nick?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure if I can see it. Maybe, I was wondering where the limits of the platted right-of-way or the replatted right-of-way is going to be. Uh, say, the north side of Driver's Lane. I guess it'll be the existing right-of-way line that's there now, but, uh.
That's correct, Bill. You can see that the intersection of Driver's Lane and Nichols Lane pulls away from the existing, uh, boundary for Driver's Lane. So there's really a lot of excess land there that if those property owners were interested, we could potentially give back or sell to, to owners there at some future date. Of course, there's not, not a lot of use for it. I don't know if you can tell by the, the plat there, but there is a Bull's Creek that comes through there, near that intersection. And so it's not, it's not very useful land for those property owners.
So what we need to do is have Brian just close the, the subdivision so that it's contained completely within the dark line. So, which would incorporate parts of Driver's Lane. Uh, I guess down there to where it says C7, it would needs to have a line that joins in with the north right-of-way line. And same thing where L1 starts to join up. I guess where that sanitary sewer manhole is on the north side of Driver's Lane across from L1 there. And then follow the right-of-way line to have clo, to close it up.
Right, I agree. We should be showing that northern boundary.
Okay.
Nick, John, I sure am glad you explained that this is just like a post-action paper cleanup because I thought I was losing my mind. I knew this was already built. So this sounds like, unless anybody else on the commission has some questions for them, this just sounds like a cleanup issue that engineering and planning can handle. I don't know that we have any input onto it, unless somebody else has some comments.
Hey, John, it's, it's Matt. And my only comment is, this looks good to me.
Yeah.
So, let's move it along.
Moving along. We'll move to item number seven, which is Windsong Commercial, an amended preliminary master development plan. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to amend the PMDP and revise the FMDP for the commercial section to remove, remove street trees from the rights of way. There will be landscaping, including trees, inside each lot of the commercial section of the Windsong Development. Dustin, if you would go to the next slide. So I've provided this illustration here. This is only removing the trees from the inside of the sidewalk of both sides of the street for this internal drive on the, the darker line that is shown on the screen. There will be additional landscaping, both on the residential side and on each one of the commercial lots. It'll just be on the other side of the sidewalk. So this is just removing tree, street trees, which are not required by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Do we have a representative for the applicant online?
Uh, we do, I believe. David Hendrickson with Reagan Smith. Your line's been unmuted.
Hi, yes, David Hendrickson. We also have Brian Reed in our office as well, who was, who was with us tonight.
Okay, both lines have been unmuted.
Yeah, this is Brian.
Mr. Hendrickson and Mr. Reed, do y'all have any additional comments or anything to add to what staff has presented?
No, sir, not at this time. Yeah, I think, I think Josh explained it well.
Okay, so as I understand it, the trees will still line the street. We're just placing them on the, the commercial outparcels instead of in the, the five-foot, what I call a devil's strip, the five-foot grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I would say this is probably a good change because if y'all recall, right about the time this project came through, we were trying to change all of those grass right-of-way strips between the sidewalk and the curb from five feet up to eight feet. But they had already done a preliminary master development plan at five feet on this one. So we didn't require them to make that larger. But the reason to go from five feet up to eight feet on that, that right-of-way strip was that engineering said that, I think, TDOT or, the, the new codes require that the trunk of a tree be no closer than two feet to the curb. So this takes care of the concerns about the obstacle being too close to the street and still gets the trees. Am I summing that up correctly, Josh?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, John. I, I see this as an improvement. Um, I'm, I'm not a fan of the trees being that close to the street anyway. So I only see good things here.
Any other commissioners have any input on this?
I have a question about, there's a, a strip there. It used to be the Woods Ferry Road. Uh, what's going to happen to that piece of property where the Woods Ferry Road was?
The owner of it's going to hang on to it until it's unusable?
So, Mr. Wilson, I've circled in yellow the, the, um, small triangle piece of property that you're speaking of. It is owned by a separate company, and it is not part of the Windsong Development. It is a remnant piece of property for which no plans have been submitted to the planning department.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any input or questions? Alana?
No, I'm good so far with what we talked about. Can you hear me?
Well, see, uh, if no one else has any, um, questions or comments, this, I think y'all, this looks good. And we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Looks like an improvement. We'll move on to Kennesaw Farms, Phase Seven, Section One, a final plat. Sharon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Josh filling in for Sharon. This is a final plat for Kennesaw Farms. It consists entirely of residential building lots to the northwest of the existing NHC facility. And I know Cal Gentry with, uh, the developer is here on the line with us as well.
Yes, I'm here.
The FMDP.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, Cal, thank you. So the FMDP and the preliminary development plan were previously approved, and this is a final plat for that same section, uh, which I believe is Phase One of, of possibly two to three.
Cal, do you have any, or Bill, did you have some comments?
No, I have no comments on this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I saw your name pop up on the screen. Mr. Gentry, do you, do you have anything to add to staff's presentation or for us?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is all pretty straightforward.
Do we have any questions or input, comments from any members of the commission?
Uh, it's, it's Matt. And I've looked over this pretty thoroughly. It looked pretty straightforward to me, so I don't see any problems with it.
Anyone else? I think it looks pretty straightforward then. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks, Cal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is the Galton Fire Station Number Three, an EMS addition revised final master development plan. Josh, are you handling this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is Galton Fire Station Number Three on Red River Road. The city and county request to amend the existing plan on this site to add an additional bay for use by an ambulance provided and staffed by county EMS. It's circled in red. Dustin, if you go to the next slide, it is going to be located to the rear of the property. And next slide, Dustin. This is the architectural elevations of how it fits in with the existing two fire bays that are used.
This is the architectural elevations of how it fits in with the existing, uh, two fire bays that are used. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, I'm assuming we don't have a representative for the applicant on this, do we?
Uh, green lid design is the, uh, contract, so I believe Andy's still with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Andy.
No, I, I don't have anything to add. It's pretty straightforward. I'll answer any questions you may have.
So this, this is an addition onto the current building, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't, looks pretty straightforward. I don't see problems with this at all.
Any other, um, questions or comments from anybody on the commission? Saying none, that-
It looks nice.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Mrs. Hibler, was that you?
Yes, sir, it was Alana. No, I'd say it looks, it looks really nice and looks like it well put together in the drawing.
Sure does.
Okay. Then, um, we'll see you back in a couple of weeks then. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item number 10, which is McCain's Station, Phase One Commercial, Final Master Development Plan. Uh, Dustin?
Dustin Shane Gallatin Planning. Um, so this is the, uh, Phase One Commercial, uh, infrastructure being, uh, getting an FMDP here. Um, it's going to consist of two public right-of-ways and one private one. Uh, Road A is going to connect from Big Station Camp, uh, up through Lots One and Two to Lot Three, uh, at the top of your screen there. And Road B will intersect Road A and stub out into Lot Two, um, towards the right of the screen, on the screen there. Um, let's see. Drainage, uh, drainage infrastructure is proposed, uh, with all the requisite pipes, head walls, uh, big detention area. Um, there's going to be, the, uh, street trees are shown on this FMDP, uh, that were in, that were approved with the PMDP. Um, things that we're needing from them are, uh, to fix their, the buffer yards they've put down to make them match the PMDP. Um, also, uh, some tree, we need trees around the detention pond on top of the berm. Uh, we need them to extend Road B out so that it, it can encompass, uh, the area needed for the commercial out parcel that's going to go in there for ingress and egress. Um, and then we also, uh, this is going to be part of the Big Station Camp Transportation Improvement District. Um, so there's going to be an agreement for pro-rata contributions, uh, to improvements to that road. So, thank you.
Okay, and we have, do we have a representative for the applicant, uh, online present?
Yes, sir, this is Brian Reed from Reagan Smith.
Go ahead, Ms. Reed. Do you have anything to add to Dustin's presentation?
Uh, we're just gonna, uh, continue working with staff and engineering on their comments.
Okay.
Mr. Harris, I got a question for you. The, uh, what, what width is the, as John calls it, the devil strip? Is you, you guys at five feet or eight foot in the zone, you're planting the trees? I can't remember. This is one that, how it wound up.
You talking about that, how wide is that strip?
Yeah, it's-
Where the trees are planted?
Yeah, between the, between the curb and the, uh, and the sidewalk.
I can get that answer for you.
I'm pretty sure that this was the project that transitioned over to eight feet.
I, I think it was too, but it's, you know, just having to talk about it. Eight feet, okay. Very good, very good.
Did, what was the answer on that?
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
Good, excellent.
And my only question, I think I've asked this before, um, the, I understand why that, that, I'll call it a frontage road. It's the road that connects over to the apartment. I understand why that had to be a private drive because that turn radius didn't meet city standards. Um, is there some way during the course of this to get some assurance, uh, or what assurance can we have that road can't be closed or changed, that it will always connect over to the apartments? Because it is a private drive and they would have the right to, to close it or alter it. That would be a question to Mr. Reed.
You're just asking what assurance we would have we can give?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what assurance we can ask, so, um, what assurance can be given that that will always remain an open and pub, uh, a public street even though it's a private drive?
I don't know if I have an answer for you right now on that.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is Josh.
Josh, go ahead.
Uh, what we can do with this plan and future final plats is ensure that ro- private Road B, as identified in the plans, is placed inside what's called a public utility drainage and access easement or at a minimum an access easement with connection points here and here so that the public will always have, be able to use this road, uh, as if it was a public road.
Yeah, that's why you went to planner school and I didn't. That's great.
And actually, that's, that's indicated on the plans. I'm sorry, it is on there, that it, that there's a, a public access easement, uh, overlaying that road. So they're agreeing to that, yeah.
That satisfies any concern I had. Uh, any other questions, uh, from any member of the commission? Well, seeing none then, looks good and we'll see you back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. We'll move on to item 12, which is Hunt Club, Med Spa, a final master development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the applicant is requesting a FMDP for a commercial out parcel fronting on Nashville Pike and Hunt Club. The applicant is requesting planning commission a buffer, approve a buffer yard alternative on the east and north property line due to utility conflicts. Uh, I've identified them here on the plan circled in red. There is existing White House Utility District, uh, lines in the north, the one fronting Nashville Pike, but also here on the east. Staff is recommending the required trees be placed elsewhere on this property, including fronting a shared driveway to the south of the property. Dustin, if you go to the next slide. This is technically off the property, but is part of a shared access easement between, uh, this, several properties in this area of Hunt Club. The applicant is seeking to preserve existing trees on the Nashville Pike side of the property with new tree protection protocol city staff have developed. This is the first project to do so, so we're really excited to see how well the process we've put together works, uh, and any tweaking that we need to do. Uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all have.
Uh, we have a representative for the applicant here. Would that be Andy?
Yes, sir, I'm here. This is Andy.
Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, sir, we'll get as many trees on there as we can get. There are lots of utilities on this piece of property and, um, one of the comments was to get with the electric department, so we tried to do that today and, um, we'll just work around as many of the obstacles as we can.
Do you have any questions from members of the commission?
Hey, hey, Andy, it's Matt. Um, question, so this, this is, I'm familiar with the Hunt Club property, so the, the alternative, the buffer yard in front of this project along Nashville Pike, would it be similar, since I know where the, this office condos are right next to this? You know, I'm sure they had the same issue, so are we talking about having a kind of a similar, similar landscape buffer or look in front of all of it now?
Yeah, we can mimic what's already there. I know that this existing Hunt Club was built some time ago.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, I work extensively with White House Utility District and I know how they feel about the reasements. And, uh,
I, I guess my, I guess the, this, the point of my comment was just as, for, for some continuity, you know, tying in this to the, to the old, to this part of Hunt Club that was developed 10 years ago. Um, anything we can do to, to keep the look consistent as you drive down Nashville Pike, I think would be good.
And I'm not opposed to doing that. I, I'm, and from our standpoint, we're not opposed to the, the actual buffer. We just don't, we don't want to get in a situation like we've been getting into lately where these projects are coming back before you guys hell in due to utility conflicts and we're just trying to head this one off at the pass before it gets to that situation, but we'll do as much as we possibly can do, um, to make it look like it, it belongs there.
Dustin, can you go back to the previous slide, please? So, Matt, a lot of the tree preservation that's taking place on this site is, uh, here in the front along Nashville Pike, but also here along Hunt Club. So we're working with Andy to preserve as many of the existing trees as possible so that when this can, when this project comes to fruition, it doesn't, uh, it tries to blend as, as, as much as possible. The growth of the existing trees over the past 10 years is impossible to replicate. So that's why there's a strong emphasis on preserving as many of those trees as possible.
Yep, I'm, I'm fine with that and, you know, I understand trees grow over time and eventually it all, it all works itself as long as we get them in the right spot. So I think you're answering the right track.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, input? Seeing none and, um, good luck, Andy. We'll see you back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Looks good. Um, item number 13 is home for the aged. The zoning text amendment, um, City of Gallatin Planning Department.
Okay, oh. In your agenda package, you were given a draft of an ordinance as a marked up draft. And I think you've seen this or something very similar to this earlier. And as I'd indicated at our last regular meeting, at the end of the meeting, that we provided a list of, uh, definitions that are included in the state statutes. So what you see on the screen there is, uh, the new language would be expanding the definition of community residential home to include, um, adult care home, home for the aged, uh, assisted care facility, home for the aged residents, brain tra- traumatic brain injury residential home. And also identifies resident manager and substitute caregiver. So we already currently have the community residential home, which is, uh, limited by state statute to persons with disabilities. And that's described in Title 13, Chapter 24 of the statutes. And so these additional definitions, which are provided with, as an attachment to this draft, uh, describe what those adult care homes are and they're summarized there on page one. They're the res- if you can go back to the first page of this item number. Uh, they're in red, oops, one, one page back. They're in red, so there's a little bit of difference between some of these and, and the language that I show there in green is things that I've asked you to look at and maybe question about some restrictions that we might want to place on some of these homes if they're going to be allowed. Uh, one would be, uh, the differences in some of these is the adult care home allows a max of five adult elderly or disabled residents. An assisted care living facility, there's no restriction on the number of residents. Uh, home for the aged is four or more non-related persons, primarily aged persons. The home for the age resident is used in the singular in that case. Uh, traumatic brain injury home allows for a maximum of eight persons. Now that corresponds with the persons with a disability under Tennessee Code, uh, Title 13, Chapter 24. You can have up to eight persons and an additional three persons that are considered carebit, uh, caregivers. So there's a lot of different, almost very similar types of care homes that are licensed by the state that, uh, could be classified as a community residential home. So community residential homes are basically allowed in all residential zoning districts and by expanding the definition, that wouldn't change. They'd still be allowed. It'd just be, uh, different types of people as opposed to a more narrowly tailored. Uh, also, some of the, um, the districts and more dense zoning districts where you have smaller homes, we would, uh, recommend or have you consider a staff of machine as a conditional use as opposed to just a, a permitted use. And, and those districts, it would be the H, of the R six district would be a conditional use in the MRO district, in the MU district, in the MUG district. And, uh, in the MUL, we, we don't have very much MUG or MUL and that's quite unlikely that we would see them there, but, and then the GO district, which we also don't have a whole lot of as well. But where there's a conditional use as well as, uh, the, the standards for community residential home, uh, as a permitted use would have to comply with the conditional use specific standards. So there's a list of those that is provided in that draft that you have and that's on page, I think, seven, if you can pan down there a little bit. Operator. There we are. And they're, right now, they're just shown in red and or, um, in black type. So those are the things really you might want to consider as well. Are these, uh, special conditions that apply to community residential homes either as a conditional use or a permitted use, uh, sufficient enough to protect, uh, area properties? In your opinion. So we have a distance, uh, separation requirement that we're proposing here. And, um, you know, there's some other things that I wanted to point out is that the intent of these community residential homes is, is not to create a medical care facility. Now, there might be some minor medical care, but that's not the primary reason they're there. So hospice house or some kind of a, a nursing home type, a small nursing home is not the intent of this community residential home. So we have highlighted those, all those definitions in your attachment and I think that's on past page seven there. Uh, if you can scan down, there we go. So if, what I'd like for you to do between now and the next, the meeting is to look at each one of these descriptions of these different types of homes and see which ones you want to qualify as a community residential home, if in fact you want to go that route, and which ones you don't want to. So the ones I've circled, highlighted and circled in the, I guess it's a pink marker, would be the ones we would include in as community residential home. And the others, uh, uh, are just defined there so you can, uh, determine what those are. So that's the bulk of it and that's kind of the direction that we're having right now, try to be proactive. So you know, two months down the road, we don't have somebody come in and say, well, you, uh, proved, uh, a home for the aged, I, I technically would like to have an adult care home and not a home for the aged to be licensed for that. So we're already ahead of the game on, on that part. So you see, you see on this last page here, this page nine, where, um, we do have a residential hospice defined under that statute and, um, that's not something that we would, uh, necessarily want to see, uh, placed in one of these zoning districts that we've identified.
Is this draft ordinance something that we have, uh, put together from some other community that already had it? Or is this a combination of what you've researched?
It's a combination of stuff that we've looked at. And again, and we're looking at it at the request of the young lady who came and appeared before the planning commission back in the fall. I think in December, she was there, November, December. And, uh, based on that, we said, look, um, why just limit it to exactly what she wants to do? Why not try to identify something very similar to what she wants to do, but also, also very similar to what state statute already requires us to do.
And your, your staff are comfortable with it, like, like you've drawn it up?
Uh, I, I am. I mean, I might tweak it a little bit between now and the next week, uh, or two weeks from now, so. Um, we're actually, let's see, our meeting is going to be on, this month is on the 18th, actually. It's a little different. So, uh, there might be some minor changes and certainly anything you have to say tonight and what you have to say in, on the 18th is important.
You've covered all the danger zones, really. I think you've done a great job with this.
Well, I'm sure there's other types of homes that, you know, we don't, we don't address group homes or like the, uh, the, the home, I can't remember what the name of it is now for juvenile delinquents. That kind of thing is certainly not included in here.
Yeah. Hey, Bill, it's Matt. Um, so you had a couple of question marks on this. They're always, you know, restrict one resident per bedroom. Is that one of the questions you're looking for feedback on?
I would. I would like to have something like that.
I, 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 I like that because it does, you know, it also helps limit the number of these homes potentially. If somebody has a three-bedroom home, you know, that, that helps. And I'm assuming if, if, if we had a restriction of one resident per bedroom and somebody, you know, asked for a variance where, you know, they had a, an older married couple that wanted to occupy one bedroom, could we grant a variance to this to allow that on a case by case basis? Does it give, does it give us that latitude?
Uh, no, but that might be written into, I don't know how you enforce something like that.
No, I don't, I don't either. I'm just, I'm just thinking about, you know, about scenarios. But I think the, you know, one resident per bedroom is probably something good to have, to have in there. And, and I, I concur with your thoughts. I don't think we need to open this up for hospice service.
Yeah, it might be if, if you go that route, or if you want to put that in the description that they still have to have the bedrooms, they just have, they can stay in the same bedroom.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, well, that, that would, that would encompass anything, you know, one, one, you know, one resident per bedrooms. If you have four bedrooms, you have four residents. Do we really care which bedroom they occupy? No, I don't think so. It's just more of a way to limit the, the occupancy. So we don't wind up having, you know, somebody, you know, move some walls and have to, you know, have, you know, start putting three people in a bedroom.
Yeah, I don't, I think that would be a, not a good thing to do.
Hey, Matt, this is, this is Josh. The TCA code speaks to this and it sets a limit at a maximum of two residents per bedroom. But also, one of the things that we get into is to what degree do we have the ability here at the city to be involved and regulate these facilities from a practical basis? So if we can, if we can keep it very general, they are regulated by the state. So we, a lot of it's left up to the state. But in order to meet our rules, we want to write them in such a way that we can still enforce them without, without sending our enforcer in on a daily basis to see how many people are here, who's related to who, are you here, or you, what kind of services are you receiving? And that's one of the dangers.
I, I understand. I just want to make sure we have it's, that our ordinance is written in a way that it at least acts as a deterrent for somebody to, to some degree that it can. But I think, I think we're on the right track.
And the building department would do a life safety inspection yearly on these licensed facilities.
Well, so, so far, I think what you guys have done looks good. And I think you're, we're going in the right direction.
Bill, this is John. Yeah, I think I agree with Matt. Everything you've done, this is right in your wheelhouse. You're good at writing this kind of code. There's only one term that jumped out at me. And if you could define the term or help me understand it, if you go back a couple of pages, one of the items marked in yellow was ambulatory surgical. And I was trying to figure out how that even kind of fits into this. There we go. Item three, ambulatory surgical treatment center.
Yeah. Now, we're not in, we're not advising that that be allowed as a, as a community residential home. Only those that are circled in the pink marker.
Oh, okay.
So there's like 40 something different types of uses or definitions. Some of them are just definitions of a person, but some of them are definitions of, of different types of facilities. And so like, here's a lot, dentist is one in there, for example, with a person. So hospital is all included in there. All these that are listed, we're not going to put in there as part of a community residential home.
Got it. Okay.
Hospital wouldn't be. It's just, I just highlighted all the definitions that are used in this title 68.
I understand.
This, John, this is Josh. This section of TCA code is generic definitions for the entire medical community within the state of Tennessee. So there's a lot of terms in here that we do not use and we don't regulate. But the way that it's set up, it is all encompassing of any medical definition within TCA code across the state, not just within the narrow confines of planning.
Understood. Any other questions or feedback from members of the commission?
I'm just concerned, once, once the decision is made, Bill, will you do a final draft on this?
Yeah, we'll have a final draft for you at the next meeting. It'll be in your agenda package.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Do we have any other business or announcements?
Yeah. Let's see here. Get my papers together. All right. Now, some of you, and I mentioned before, and I think some of you are quite familiar with this situation. We had a ruling by the BZA that a part of our architectural provisions apply to all structures in the city and not just to commercial and multifamily industrial property. So because of their interpretation, that overridden or overrode the interpretation of the planning department, what's going to happen is that there are a lot of descriptions for compatibility that up until now had been reserved for the planning commission to apply when reviewing site plans and master development plans. But now they're going to have to be applied to all structures in the city. So we're going to need the planning commission to weigh in on compatibility. I'm going to try to prepare an interpretation memo on how all of these terms that are used in the debt, in the description of compatibility should be maybe considered. And they're very subjective terms right now. So we're going to try to narrow them down by definitions to provide some guidance. But until the code is amended, that will address this either in expanding it greatly, we're going to have to rely upon the planning commission to make some findings of compatibility. Now, the, the ordinance does allow for an alternative plan to be approved by the planning commission. So if someone brings in a building for a new home in our residential subdivision, they can ask for an alternative plan approval. There's also standards for residential infield development that the planning commission can approve and is recharged with approving. That's in sections, the alternative plan approval is, which y'all have exercised many times before, is subsection D, and the residential infield development standards are part of section E. So this case has really made life quite difficult for us because it makes us the, the ones who have to determine what is compatible under all of these sub definitions in subsection B. For example, there is a term called building forms, existing topography, roof types, types of glazed openings, portions of openings, massing, scale, degree of detail, all of which are not defined. So those are things that many people, maybe not many, but some people in the community feel that they want their particular standard applied in their neighborhood or next to their property. And so that was going to be subject to some sort of review. And apparently, we didn't do so well when we tried to apply this in a request for a person who wanted to build an accessory structure. So really, I mean, this is going to be, unless you want me to apply subjective, which is also subject to appeal, I don't feel, I would be the one appropriate to do that. Now, I, we've done that in other, in other cases, perhaps applied something subjective when the code was not clear. But this one has been before the Board of Zoning Appeals, and apparently we weren't applying this. Now, what it also will do is ensure that we have likely is that we have a lot of non-conforming structures that have been permitted over the years in the city that may not meet this standard. So what we're trying to do now is identify how in a particular case, and we'll have to do this with all our cases, is to find what kind of, say, glazing openings are proportional to buildings adjacent to other buildings. So we're going out to, we'll have to go out and inspect and other buildings and the architecture and the roof styles of those other buildings and the facades that are used on those buildings and to the scale. Now, the scale, I'm not sure where we're going to go with that. I think we can define scale, but how and where we get outside of the scale is up for debate. So this is going to be something that really, unfortunately, I think in this case, to keep from getting appealed and appealed and appealed. And we may not get appealed on a lot of them, but some of them we might. And so this is a way that I think is, the only way I can find other than putting the onus on me to be subjective, I would rather put the onus on the planning commission at, as decided by the MBZA. I know this is not what you want to hear. It's not what I want you to hear, but.
Uh, this is Alexander Staff Attorney. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So Bill, I understand what you're saying. But unfortunately, as our ordinance is currently written, the onus is on you to make those compatibility decisions under 1308, when it does not go before the planning commission. So you cannot just give that authority to the planning commission because you're uncomfortable.
I'm not, Otasha, I'm not. I'm giving that authority to the planning commission under an alternative plan approval or residential infield development standard approval.
Okay.
That's where I'm directing that. When, if someone comes in and says, I want an alternative plan approval or a request, then I say, well, we can take it to the planning commission. So that's where I'm going to direct people.
Well, no, no, no. My question is, is it normally required to go before the planning commission?
It is if they want an alternative.
Okay.
Yeah. Or this residential infield.
That's Matt. Why, why would they be requesting alternative? Is that?
Because it'll, it will, they'll probably be asking for something that doesn't, let's say if you wanted to build, and I don't want to use the exact, exact example that we had that was MBZA case, but someone wanted to build an accessory structure and it didn't have the same number of windows per linear foot. It may have a different roof type or a different building material than the actual house that's next door. So then someone would say, well, I want to build it with a half hardy board as opposed to all brick. And/or I want to use a metal roof versus shingles or something like that. We would direct them to go to the alternative plan approval.
So Bill, this is John Prair. How are we coming on the, the committee that was being formed to create some objective standards that can be applied so that this burden won't fall on you or, or actually on the planning commission?
Yeah, eventually that, that committee is, that committee has been established and we have members, including Mr. Harris, who have agreed to sit on that. We haven't had a meeting because of the city halls closed. City hall is supposed to be open at this time on the 19th. We'll just have to wait and see what happens there. And so if that's the case, we're going to be scheduling that meeting, which will be a public meeting, and have that committee start their work on addressing this whole subsection.
Do you think that, that committee can operate on Zoom like we have on, on this? I mean, do we have to wait until the, the band lifts and can meet in person again?
We, we don't, but I'm just concerned about there. Here's a couple of things I'm concerned about. First of all, the, they're, the ability to clearly get a presentation and understand it and see the same thing or ask questions in kind of a, a less hurried fashion. And the other thing is that this would be a public meeting and the public would want to attend. And well, let's just put it this way. We've had somebody say that this needs to wait until the public can attend in a regular manner.
Well, I, yes, I know that somebody said that. But it seems to me like with the ability to, you know, with just three people on that committee, if I understand correctly, it was just a three person committee, a Zoom meeting, I've had a lot of business meetings with peer group members where we share ideas, we share our screen and can exchange ideas. So I would think the process could get started. I did not know that all committee meetings like that had to be a completely public meeting. I thought the committee can meet, come up with a draft, kind of like the tree ordinance ad hoc committee has been meeting to come up with a draft of that. But then when they meet to, to debate on it and come up with the objective standards, I can understand where the public needs to be involved.
We've been told otherwise, and that the tree committee will be a public.
Alexander?
John, because it is a me, it is a body that's going to be making a recommendation to this body for the change in our ordinance, the law requires that it be public.
Okay. Even the, okay, very well.
State law does. And John, I can send you that statute.
Oh, you don't have to. I mean, I certainly, I trust you're correct on that. I just was not aware of that. I knew that the deliberations and coming up with the recommendations would have to be a public meeting, but I thought that the committee could at least howl and come up with some ideas before they.
It's similar to our work session meetings, which you're not deliberating, you're not making any decisions, but we have to open it up to the public.
Understand.
So I just want y'all to be clear, until this is resolved by this advisory committee and which will then make a recommendation to the planning commission, who will make a recommendation to the council. It may not be all right away. In the meantime, anytime that one of these accessory structures or a new structure being built in any neighborhood, commercial or residential comes in, that doesn't meet compatibility standards as described in section B, is going to be coming to the planning commission as an alternative architecture. So that might be a, end up being pretty pretty lengthy agenda, just dealing with that stuff.
All right. Was, was there any other business or any announcements? Or do you have anything on training or is that?
Yeah, we do. Josh, you might want to mention where we've lined up somebody for training after the meeting. So stick around. Don't hang up or do log off when the meeting ends next week. We'll remind you of that, of course, next week or two weeks from now.
This is Josh. Yes, John. We do, we have lined up one speaker for one hour of legal training at the end of the planning commission meeting on 518. If you'd like to email me suggested topics of discussion, I'd be happy to relay them to our dear friend, whose name is escaping me at the moment, who is a
Doug Sloan.
Doug Sloan is a former planner and also a practicing attorney with, I believe it's Bone Law.
Bone McAllister, yeah.
Bone McAllister. So he will be joining us at the end of next planning commission meeting on the 18th for approximately one hour. We've also identified some other training resources that are available to all of you. You can do them on your own in a digital format that are put together by MTAS, which deal with specific planning commission or BZA guidance and training. It's a training that they normally do in person, but because of the current situation we find ourselves in, they've moved it to in both an online format, and they've tentatively scheduled some things for later this summer. We can share that information with you and share links with anyone who's interested. And we, members of our planning commission or city council or Board of Zoning Appeals, we'd be happy to engage with you and let you know when those trainings are.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for researching that, getting something lined up. If there's no other business or no other.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Are we going to try to meet face to face in two weeks? Or, or is it too early to make that determination? Or what? Or what?
I believe, and we'll double check and certainly be on your agenda. And you'll be notified. Right now, I think the nineteenth of the month, which is a Tuesday, is the day they intend to open city hall, now that could change. And you know, it may even be the eighteenth, but we will certainly let you know and be prepared to attend either way. Either remotely and or certainly show up, now, one thing that we're, we may end up doing is even though. If the building is open. You might be able to do but one of the other. So we'll just have to see.
Tonight? Any of the planning commission members?
Pardon, I didn't hear that.
Are any of the planning commission members at city hall tonight?
Johnny Wilson is.
Okay.
But he's sitting in there by himself.
And Dr. Organe, a lot of whether we begin to meet in person or not depend, regardless of whether city hall opens up. Depends on the governor's executive order, and it does expire regarding to these electronic meetings on May eighteenth. But should he extend it? Then we'll decide then. As a city, we'll go from there.
I understand completely. I'm like Johnny, I like face to face.
Well, I'm not by myself, I have a policeman to protect me over here.
And Dr. Organe, you're always welcome to turn on your webcams that we can all see your bright shiny happy face.
I'll turn it on right now if you get rid of this screen I've got in front of me.
They have a question, nobody's video was, the only videos I saw were, well, well, there you are, Dr. Organe, how did you do that? Was that something we were doing wrong or is that something that was just? Maybe a glitch tonight while we couldn't see the videos?
John, this is Josh, I, either I set the meeting up wrong or Zoom has changed some settings. I had to go back in manually and allow all the panelists to turn their webcams on. But I did not want to disrupt the meeting to let you know you could do that.
Oh, okay, very good.
But I've, I've put together some time with Jeff, Lori and Larry with IT tomorrow to discuss this issue. So that we can see if it's something we need to change with the meeting setup or if it's just something I did wrong.
Well, overall, I just want to say congratulate everybody, y'all and the IT department, I think that y'all really come a long way and these meetings have gone very smoothly considering, so thank you.
Great.
If there's no other announcements or business, we'll, we will adjourn. All right, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.